Two, one.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of Troy City Council. My name is William Lutz, President of Council, and we invite, welcome you to tonight's meeting on July 6, 2021 at 7:00 P. M. I will lead us in the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Heavenly Father, tonight our hearts are filled with happy memories and hopeful dreams. Lord, we are grateful for those that have come before us to help build and develop this community into the wonderful place that it is. We're grateful for the foresight. We're grateful for the dreams that those individuals have to help us live in a wonderfully safe community where we can all strive to prosper for ourselves and for our families. Lord, tonight we ask your wisdom on the decisions that we will make so that we can continue the strong tradition of good leadership in our community. Lord, be with each and every one of us, giving us wisdom and compassion and care for those that are not here and also for those that are here this evening. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips? Mr. Twiss? Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Whitten?
Here.
Mr. Severt?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Schwizer?
President.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Here.
Moved to excuse Mr. Phillips.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved, moved to excuse Mr. Phillips by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitten?
Yep.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips is excused.
Moved to excuse Mr. Twiss.
Second.
It's been moved to excuse Mr. Twiss by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt?
In honor of Mr. Whitten, yep.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Tonight we have two public hearings. Our first public hearing is on the 2022 tax budget, which is part of Resolution R. 28, 2021. This is a required public hearing that we have every time this, uh, this time of year to go over our tax budget, which will be forwarded, I believe, to the county auditor. If there's anyone that wishes to speak on Resolution R. 28, 2021, which is the 2022 tax budget, you're invited to come forward, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume. Seeing none, this will close the public hearing on the 2022 tax budget. We'll move on to public hearing for ordinance number O. 43, 2021. Mrs. Knight, would you like to read the ordinance?
Ordinance amending the amended general plan of the Troy Christian Schools Education and Performing Arts Facility Plan Development in the city of Troy, Ohio, and rezoning of a 0.764 acre area added to this plan development as a part of the amended general plan from R. 5 Single Family Residential Zoning District to a residential plan development.
If there's anyone that wishes to speak on this public hearing, you're invited to come forward to the lecture and give your name and address and take as much time as you wish to consume. Seeing none, this will end the public hearing for ordinance number O. 43, 2021. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the summary of minutes of the June 21st, 2021 meeting of Troy City Council?
Minutes of Council, June 21, 2021. Committee reports, Recreation and Parks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, reserve, naming a new prairie reserve, the Robinson Reserve at Duke Park. Resolution number R. 25, 2021, naming Prairie Reserve at the Paul G. Duke Park as Robinson Reserve at Duke Park was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O. 42, 2021, reappropriation of funds, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O. 43, 2021, amending general plan of Troy Christian Schools Plan Development was given first reading. Following comments, council adjourned at 7:20 P. M.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counsel, we should dispose of the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved to approve the minutes by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We'll move on to committee reports. We have two reports this evening. We will begin with the Buildings and Utilities Committee and Mr. Whitten.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Really quickly, I apologize to council and the citizens for that flip and remark. Uh, the Buildings and Utility Committee met on June 28th regarding electrical work that must be performed for the construction of the new fire station for a total amount not to exceed $80,000. This is work that could not be included in the construction contracts and cannot be conformed by the contractor or another entity. The cost of payments to AES Ohio is within the project's authorizations. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to make payments to AES Elec, AES Ohio for electric utility work for the new fire station number one. So that this project is not delayed, the committee supports emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted by John Twilliger, Liam C. Twiss, and myself, Jeffrey G. Whitten, as Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Whitten. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move to our final report of the evening with the Community Partnerships Committee and Mr. Rozell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This committee met on Ju- June 28th regarding the request, Staunton Grange, for an agreement to the purchase agreement, amendment to the purchase agreement that would permit them to enter into a sublease. Details include that such sublease would be limited to no more than seven days per month. The fire chief would be provided with a schedule and that a certain parking reserved for the fire department would not be used. It is the recommendation of this committee that the legislation be prepared authorizing Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an amended and restated purchase agreement with the Staunton Grange as discussed herein. Respectfully submitted by John Schwizer, Jeffrey Whitten, myself, William Rozell, as Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move on to citizen comments for items on the agenda. We have three resolutions and one ordinance for deliberation tonight. If you wish to comment on any of those items, you are welcome to come to the lecture and give your name and address, and you have two minutes to address council on any of the items on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R. 26, 2021?
Resolution number R. 26, 2021. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio to make payment to AES Ohio related to providing power for the new fire department construction project and declaring an emergency. This would authorize payment not to exceed $80,000. First reading.
House Counsel, we should dispose of the items?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Moved to adopt. Second.
Three reading rules been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Schwizer, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes. Yes. I said yes. Messed up her.
Sorry.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R. 27, 2021?
Resolution number R. 27, 2021. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio to enter into an amended and restated purchase agreement with the Staunton Grange. This will permit the Grange to do some limited subleasing. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Moved to adopt. Second.
The three reading rule's been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Schwizer, seconded by Mr. Severt. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the last resolution of the evening? Resolution R. 28, 2021?
Resolution number R. 28, 2021. Resolution adopting the budget of the city of Troy, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2022 and declaring an emergency. This is the adoption of the tax budget. First reading.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Schwizer, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O. 43, 2021?
Ordinance number O. 43, 2021. Ordinance amending the amended general plan of the Troy Christian Schools Education and Performing Arts Facility Plan Development, P. D. R., in the city of Troy, Ohio, and rezoning a 0.764 acre area added to this plan development as a part of the amended general plan from R. 5 Single Family Residential Zoning District to a residential plan development, P. D. R. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the second reading.
Considering we had a public hearing on this item tonight, this will be scheduled for discussion by the Community and Economic Development Committee at a future time, this will be held over for a third reading, which we will, uh, take up on July 19th. Moving on, are there any communications or announcements this evening, Mrs. Knight?
No, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to comments of officials. Mayor Odom?
Just, uh, hope that everybody had a good Fourth of July weekend. We enjoyed the, the concert and the parade and the fireworks. It was a hot day, but, um, all in all, it was a really good day and just hope everybody enjoyed the weekend.
Thank you, Mayor. Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Tipton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, the, uh, ordinance 43 would be scheduled to be at the committee meeting next Monday night on, uh, July 12th, which, with a possible third reading on the 19th. Yes. That's all I have. Thank you.
Director of Law, Mr. Kerber?
I have nothing to add this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerber. City Auditor, Mr. Friggy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Friggy. Do any council members have any comments they'd like to add at this time?
I, I have two.
Mr. Severt?
Mr. President. Uh, one, uh, I concur with the mayor's comments regarding the Fourth of July. Not many people on this dais may remember, but there was a period of time, probably a four or five year period of time, when we did not even have fireworks in the city of Troy, and there were thousands of people out, uh, watching the fireworks and the concert. And, uh, I would like to just applaud the city for what they've done in making that a very nice family-oriented event with the food trucks and the concerts. And, um, we're not that far removed from not having anything in Troy, so that, that's kudos to them. Uh, the second, I was in the paper and, uh, I know a number of people in the audience were here, uh, were there, but, uh, the statue unveiling of Pete Jenkins, I think we should give a, uh, thank you to Ted Mercer and all the work that he and his committee did, uh, to put that together. It's a great tribute to a great man, and, uh, if you haven't seen it yet, you should, uh, take the opportunity to go look at it. It's, uh, right on the entrance to Sherwood at the Mayor's Park, so. Uh, Westbrook, I'm sorry. I live in Sherwood. It's in Westbrook, in Westbrook. So, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Severt, and, and if I might add, the words that you spoke at that event were, were very well done.
Thank you.
Any other council members have anything they wish to add? Any staff members in the audience have any comments that they'd like to add this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to audience comments. If you wish to address council on any concern, you're more than welcome to come up to the lecture and give your name and address and take as much time as you wish to consume.
Hello, my name is Christopher Hirschberger. I live at 2717 South Side Drive here in Troy, Ohio. Um, I have two issues tonight. It's not just going to be on making Troy a sanctuary city for the unborn. Uh, the first one, a little bit lesser, a lot lesser of importance. The link on www.troyohio.gov, the city council page, when it says, uh, email all members of city council form, it doesn't email. Last time I checked, I meant to check it before I left this evening. Please forgive me, I did not, but last time I checked, it didn't email out to all the city council members, and it didn't necessarily go to all .gov sites, so maybe something you need to look into. Just throwing that out there, just for the record. Um, and two, the most important part of what I plan on talking about tonight is making Troy, Ohio a sanctuary city for the unborn and passing an ordinance for that. Uh, I want to start with the founder of Planned Parenthood, Margaret Sanger. Margaret Sanger, uh, was a well-known communist, supporter of eugenics, and a racist. Um, her stated goal was, uh, to quote, assist the race towards the elimination of the unfit, close quote. That will be the only quote that I will, um, quote from Margaret Sanger in this context. Quite frankly, I can't bring myself to read most of her quotes, and because of community guidelines on YouTube, I cannot quote them here because this meeting will be pulled off of YouTube. However, the unfit that she was speaking of eliminating was the black and brown communities. Uh, if you would like, I can give you all the, the sources for all of my information here, but if you do a quick Google search, most of this information you can find, all that you need to know about her. It's getting a little bit harder now with the YouTube algorithm. It's not letting you see all the photos of her speaking at Klan rallies and everything, but it's out there. Uh, if you do plan on looking this up, I encourage you to go to Margaret Sanger and her own words, not what other people thought of what she said, but go to her own words, and it'll give you what you need to know. Wikipedia is not a good source, just in general. Um, Margaret Sanger would also, um, surround herself with a like-minded racist and Nazi sympathizers. These people would appoint, she would appoint to the board of Planned Parenthood to make decisions for the organization. Like Hitler, she knew that her communist utopia would not work with all these black and brown people because she felt that they were not contributing to society. The goal of Planned Parenthood from the beginning was to eliminate the black and brown communities. This is why, from the very beginning, she started putting Planned Parenthoods in black communities. She said, excuse me, her and her board of racists knew that they could not go straight into these black communities and just offered to eliminate them. She knew that she had to hide her true intentions. She would go and speak to black faith leaders as well as black professionals and have some of them help spread her horrible and agenda, her horrible agenda. And in some cases, uh, it would work, but other times they were able to see through her facade. These letters and speeches that she used talking to the black faith leaders and black professionals are often used as an apologetic to see that, to say that Margaret Sanger was a champion for the black and brown communities, just trying to provoke, provide birth control to an underserved community. However, these letters and speeches were at the same time that she was writing letters and speeches stating her end goal of eliminating black communities. Go and look these up. Planned Parenthood has stated, has started to distance itself from the name Margaret Sanger, and earlier this year, they changed the name of the Margaret Sanger Award because of her ideology. You might be saying, great, Chris, what does this have to do with the city of Troy? It's a valid question. I'm glad you asked because it's right here in my notes. Uh, Planned Parenthood is about, Planned Parenthood and other abortion providers may be trying to distance themselves from the name Margaret Sanger, but they have yet to distance themselves from the ideology of Margaret Sanger. Abortion is the number one killer of African-Americans in America. Higher than AIDS, violence crimes, violent crimes, accidents, cancer, and heart disease combined. All of those things combined do not match how many black babies are murdered every day. Approximately two out of every three Planned Parenthoods are in black communities, and blacks are the only minority group here in America that are on the decline, while every other minority group is increasing here in America. In fact, a 39-minute drive from this very location can get you to a Planned, can get you to an abortion clinic that is murdering over 50 babies a day. It is close. Do not let this or any other organization like it enter this city. Make Troy, Ohio a sanctuary city for the unborn so that no abortion provider can set up its racist practices here. So I only see really four options when coming to this, this view of this city ordinance. One, you believe that a woman's right to choose supersedes every other right. You believe that this unconstitutional opinion by a court holds, holds more rate, more weight than all other rights. Currently, murder is illegal, as it should be. I'm a huge advocate for freedoms, lean very libertarian. However, this is a just law, and babies deserve to be safe in the safest place in this world, in their mother's womb. Two, for your views on this, this ordinance, you have no care or concern for the freedoms of the citizens of the city of Troy, specifically those in the black and brown communities. It doesn't make any difference to you, therefore it's not worth the headache. Three, of your view of, of this city ordinance and whether or not it gets passed, you are a big supporter of the black and brown communities when it comes time to making public appearances and public statements. However, when it comes time to act, the black and brown communities are not worth the political capital it will take that you will need to spend. You think that they can't see through your virtue signaling mask. Or four, you seek to approve the ordinance to make Troy, Ohio a sanctuary city for the unborn. I don't see how there can be any other way. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Send me a text, send me an email. Let me know where I'm off base on this. History and God will judge how you and I act in this moment, if we have the courage to defend other human beings who are made in the image of God, and we have history to tell us what happens when people see other people as not humans. May God have mercy on us. That can only be found in his son through the forgiveness of our sins. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschberger. Since the last meeting, I know that, uh, council has received a copy of the ordinance that was adopted by the city of Lebanon, and I know that our law directors looked at that. Uh, Mr. Kerber, do you have any comments or thoughts on what was passed in Lebanon and, and whether that can be applied here to our community?
Well, uh, uh, you know, at first when Mr. Hirschberger came up, uh, uh, I guess it was two meetings ago, I wasn't sure what a sanctuary city meant, so, uh, I want to thank Mrs. Knight. She, uh, reached out to, uh, Lebanon and, uh, we secured a copy of that ordinance. And, uh, the sanctuary ordinance that I believe Mr. Hirschberger's referring to in Lebanon, what they have, uh, what they have passed is a, an ordinance that, um, makes it a criminal offense. So, uh, if anybody would, uh, receive an abortion, uh, perform an abortion, uh, possess abortion enhance, or assist of drugs, use, possess, or administer any of those drugs, Lebanon has made that a criminal penalty punishable by jail time. Um, I don't have the ordinance in front of me here today. It's quite a lengthy one. But, uh, that's what, you know, and I, I guess if there was some question, because I had, I certainly had a question, what, what's a sanctuary city for the unborn? And that's what that ordinance has done. Now, um, you know, we can all, and I'm sure we all have our opinions about, uh, the, the wisdom of, uh, Supreme Court precedent, but, um, under our system of government, the, uh, Supreme Court does go ahead and, uh, establish what is constitutional and not constitutional. And, uh, uh, under the current law right now, I, I think it's, it's very safe to say, and, uh, and, uh, I, I know that there was some reference to, some scholars disagree with this, but the current law of the land is, is that is not, what Lebanon has done is not a constitutional enactment. So, um, you know, if Troy were to go ahead and follow Lebanon's lead, I think it would be highly likely, it's going, a couple of different things. It certainly will invite litigation, that the city, uh, would have to certainly expend some funds to pursue that litigation, and it also could open up some liability, um, to, uh, the city as well. Now, uh, digging a little further, I saw that, um, there has been a push to, um, have communities do this, and, uh, uh, and I believe, and, uh, I, I might have to double-check this, but I believe that there's been about 25 different communities across the U. S. have passed some sort of ordinance in, in this regard. So, if the goal is to have this tested by the Supreme Court, uh, or, you know, this sort of sanctuary ordinance tested by the Supreme Court, there's 25 other communities that are going to test it before Troy, I, I suppose. So, um, but as it stands right now, um, you know, I, I think that there's some, most certainly some, um, significant, um, there would be some financial implications, uh, and also, you know, as far as pursuant to our government, uh, our, our government and how we have the Supreme Court, uh, make findings regarding the constitutionality, uh, I, I think it's pretty clear right now that the ordinance that Lebanon has passed is not a constitutional, uh, constitutional enactment.
Do any council members have any comments or questions? I do have two questions.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the first question is, under the ordinance that was passed in Lebanon, what is the maximum penalty for someone that is found guilty of committing this crime?
I, uh, Mr. Lutz, I, forgive me, I, I would have to look at that again. My recollection was that it was a year, uh, or it may have, it might, it may have just been a misdemeanor because it's a municipal, uh, enactment on it, so it'd have been up to six months.
Okay.
Uh, is to give you some sort of idea on that. But, you know, anytime that you're talking about a loss of liberty offense, it has the constitutional implications.
And, and since this is a, a misdemeanor, because from what I understand, that is what municipalities, uh, can ordain through ordinances, what court would hear these cases? Would this be something in the municipal court, or would this be something in the Would this be something in the municipal court, or would this be something in the Court of Common Pleas?
Well, if there was enforcement under an ordinance like that, you know, if the city sought to enforce that, if it passed that, the actual criminal prosecution would end up in municipal court, but I think it is much, much more likely that before it even got to that point in time, there would be a federal lawsuit filed against the city seeking a declaration that it is unconstitutional, and they would be seeking injunctions and whatnot. Now, I know some groups, and I'm not even sure which group, have already promised to initiate litigation against Lebanon.
Okay. Anything else?
Has Lebanon had any cases yet?
I'm not aware of any, Mr. Rozell.
Mr. Schilling?
Oh, Mr. Schilling?
The city of Dayton has declared themselves a sanctuary city in regards to immigration. And again, that is something that, my understanding, is handled by federal law in our Congress. So why has nobody challenged the city of Dayton in federal court to declare their sanctuary ordinance unconstitutional?
Mr. Schilling, I think it's the use of the word sanctuary. It's been used in different contexts and different meanings, and it's, they don't, the situations are not the same. For instance, I know that some sheriffs have declared certain counties to be Second Amendment sanctuaries, and in those contexts, my understanding of what those sheriffs are doing is they're declining to enforce certain firearm laws. In the context of the immigration, with some of the cities are declaring themselves as immigration, what they are doing is they are instructing their employees not to reach out to, whether it be INS or some federal immigration authority, they are instructing them, you know, if you have somebody that has a federal detainer on them, do not reach out to the federal government and assist them in any way. What Lebanon has done is something a lot different, where it has passed an ordinance making a criminal act out of something, so, and that's different than the firearm and the immigration, where they haven't enacted an ordinance making, and I don't, I'm not aware of them making anything, like, illegal. It's just stating that that's their policy, or it's directed to their employees about